Aloha, everyone. Mahalo for coming to our June Molokai Town Hall meeting. Today, we have a guest from the County Department of Public Works. But before we get started, we're going to open a poule. And I've invited Uncle Moku to do us the honors of opening us in poule. Wherever you like, wherever you like.
Okay, thank you for coming, everybody. Please, chow me. Yeah, me too. Thank you for this wonderful day. Thank you for Kiani and all our county workers as we're looking for a place to have another cemetery that we really need. So, God, I pray that you be with all of them as we come together as one and share ideas and thoughts. Just been a missed one as we share our ideas and hope that we can get this going in the next, but I think so we can have someone for, I mean, some there for community. But thank you again for all of any blessings that we have from you, Lord. And I pray that blessings always be upon you and Kiani and her brother as he helps us. And we pray all these things in Jesus' name.
Amen. Mahalo, Uncle Moku. Okay, so as most of you know, the way we do our town hall meetings is we usually try to keep it within an hour. We'll start with any guests that were invited to present. We'll finish the presentation and then we'll open it up for questions and discussion. And then I'll invite any groups here. I know the UH Maui College is here to give any updates, any other organizations, community events coming up, other meetings that you'd like the community to be involved in. We invited Dan, mahalo for attending, from Akaku. So this will also be on Akaku TV. And so we'll get started. So we're going to be discussing the Molokai Cemetery Master Plan. And we have Paul Barney with us. And he's the highway supervisor. No, close enough. Sorry, I should have wrote it down. From our County Department of Public Works. And Roger Apana, who is our district supervisor. Okay. And I'm going to invite Paul up to present. So we'll do the presentation and then I'll open it up for questions. Would you like the computer facing this way or to you or on this side?
This way, this way.
Okay.
Aloha, everybody. Thanks for joining us this evening. I'm here representing the Department of Public Works to take you guys through a little bit of what we've done so far as far as exploratory to find a new location for a public cemetery on Maui. I'm sorry, on Molokai. So we've been working with a consultant to kind of identify some potential parcels here on island along with Kiani in her office as well as Moku and Auntie Laurie for kind of what the future could hold for what's a public cemetery on Molokai. So we identified the need. We're looking at what's the master plan for it. And then our next step, our next key step is, okay, where is it going to be or where is potentially it going to be? And then we'll get to, okay, what does it look like? What facilities will it have? And then how will we manage it going forward? So we looked at state and county owned parcels, private properties, and we looked at ones that are two acres or more. So it's not the clearest, but there were six sites we looked at. Holomua Junction, which is a private site just along the highway there. We have an RM Meyer site up in Kalae. And then obviously our current Kapakia down here in town. And then as well as Maui County agricultural parcels and state parcels mainly on the west side. They were, so we wanted to look, make sure that they weren't developed, nobody had encumbrances on them. And they were, you know, available for us to be even to entertain. So, right, we all know we're kind of near capacity at Kapakia. Roger and his team here on island have been working to create some more space by a little bit more time. And then we looked at four of the sites that we identified out of the grouping and looked at them in three different aspects. So environmental, social, and cultural aspects, location and site characteristics, and then the current land use and availability of infrastructure. So some of the county of Maui agriculture parcels, so good things, right? They're county-owned, they're gentle to moderate slope, so they're kind of flat. Some of the concerns were they are near some previous contaminated pesticide operations and kind of out of the way. As far as infrastructure, we do have power, we do have road access, but water is a concern, so. So we looked at some state ag parcels which have no leases on them. Identified a couple near the airport. Kind of a little bit of a higher risk for fire, a little bit drier areas, nice gentle slopes. And it was previously developed. We also have power, roads availability, and it does have water under Molokai Ranch. So the Holomua Junction site, it is privately owned, but there is another privately owned parcel that we looked at. We have engaged with each of those on just if they're willing to sell. Had been previously developed as agricultural land, nice and flat. But we did get some feedback that there had been some farming on there before where we may have some pesticide or herbicide contamination. Has power, road access, Molokai Ranch water, but there is a large sewer line that goes through that property. Then we looked at the RM Meyer just north of the development up in Kalae. So they're willing to engage with us to sell. They also have a nearby property that has their family cemetery on it, pretty flat. And it has power, it's right against the roadway there, state roadway, and as well as county water. So we looked at it, like I said, environmentally, socially. So we looked at the history of, does it have any archaeological or cultural significant sites? How close is it to the SMA or, you know, sea level rise issues? And kind of weighted them individually. You can see RM Meyer and Holomua Junction kind of came out equal there as well as the state ag land. The county of Maui ag land was a little bit more lower, but still in that same zone. And then we looked at location, right? So how big was the parcel? Is there water there? Does it have good soils that actually drain? Do we have roadway access? Is there power nearby? All of them kind of weighed out similar there across the board. And then land use. So is it currently owned by private or public entity? Is it currently zoned correctly? And, you know, what's surrounding it, right? So some of the agricultural lands and Holomua Junction kind of in their own area, so there's not too much residential. RM Meyer and state ag land are close to other activities. So we have the airport as well as just the residential next door. So we kind of tallied those up and kind of how it turned out is that based upon our assessment, the RM Meyer Cemetery site kind of came out a little bit on top of the Holomua Junction site. And the state and county ag lands a little bit lower than that. So our hope today was, and some feedback that we got from other stakeholders is to get the community's input. If they are aware of any parcels that could be available as well as, you know, does this feel right as a good options? Because like I said, our next step would then be to really engage with the property owners to kind of negotiate purchasing. And then obviously having a space for Kapakia when it gets full, we have a space to go to, so. So our next steps, once we get feedback from you guys, is to generate a conceptual site plan. How we're going to do that, what's it going to cost? And then actually produce a report that'll actually guide us through the next couple of years. That's all I had. Only to open up the questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the Kapakia Cemetery is the only public cemetery open and there's about six more plots?
Six plots? That's one or two. Yeah, Roger?
Roger.
About, about one or two plots, no?
Okay.
Yeah, we're making, where we are making room.
We're going to be making more room for like maybe 10 or like. Yes.
Yes.
So.
But there is room. Just put it out there, there is room.
Okay, but there's not going to be a whole lot of room, which is why we're trying to move on this year now. And then there's the Veterans Cemetery, the Homestead Cemetery, and then some of the, you know, churches and Mauna Loa has a private cemetery. But Kapakia is the only public cemetery. And so this would be another county managed public cemetery for everyone. And it would, depending on the site selected, it could take anywhere from like three to seven years.
Yeah.
Being super optimistic.
Yeah, I mean, the purchase of the property could be relatively quick, I would say.
Yeah, so.
But, so we appreciate your help. So we do have funding in this year, this next week's budget, I guess you could say, FY25 to actually purchase a piece of property. So that's, that's going to be the key next step, so.
And both of the two highest ranking spots, who are W Meyer and Holomua.
Yes.
Which is owned by Pupu Lezier, TBA Molokai Ranch. Have not been approached yet or they've, they kind of know it's on the radar?
It's on the radar, yeah.
Okay, so they would be potential willing to sell?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
And, yeah, we've spoken with the Meyer family as well, so, yeah.
And so Paul presented to myself and Auntie Laurie and Uncle Moku to get some feedback on the information they gathered. And it looked good and I invited Paul to present. So this is really early in the phase of selecting a site. And I wanted to open it up to the community for feedback on the information that has been gathered so far. So that we can, you know, move on to the next steps as quickly as possible. As smart and responsibly, but as quickly as possible. So I'll open it up for questions. Has any of them given a ballpark as to how much they're willing to take with regards to the two private owners?
Yeah, so we haven't engaged that, but once we do get a letter of intent for them to sell, well, the county finance department will go and appraise the property. But based upon the previous sales of those properties, it would be within, hopefully within what we budgeted, so.
Is there any surrounding neighborhood homes and whatnot that might enter into your equation for those locations?
Yeah, so the RM Meyer, or WR, sorry. So it is adjacent to, one of the, one of the, I guess, negatives, if you want to, if you want to frame it that way. It is adjacent to a development, right? As you go up the highway there on the left. The parcel is quite big, so, you know, we would take into that account of creating, creating a buffer. And it's heavily wooded, so we would create a buffer so that it's not right against the neighbors, but.
But you haven't heard any negative feedback?
We haven't heard any negative feedback.
Well, this is the first we're opening it up to.
Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, please share. We will go through the EA, EIS process that will, that will allow people to comment on that, but.
Can you describe where it is? I know like the Sugar Mill's there and I know where the existing cemetery is. Where is the plot you're looking at in relation to that?
It is just, I guess. The existing cemetery is adjacent to the golf course, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you go just further up towards the state park, it's going to be on your left, just literally just adjacent to the development there. Yes, sir.
What is the size of the Myers properties versus Holomua Junction acreage?
If I remember correctly. RW Meyer is about eight and a half acres. I lost it. And the Holomua Junction is about just under 15 acres.
Mark, you had a question?
It came from the Filipino community. And obviously, you know, like for us Filipino, like majority prefer not to be cremated. And a majority don't want, you know, like, you know, our loved ones separated. We want to be together as much as possible. And, you know, like what's going to happen like if, if, you know, like as months go by or as maybe a year go by and, you know, like people pass? What are, what are we going to do with them? You know, like, you know, some maybe have existing plots already in Kapakia where they can be buried on top of their loved ones. While others could be like, you know, cremated and buried on top of loved ones. But what's, what's going to, what are we going to do till, for, you know, like until we have the new cemetery? Like, I agree to Kalae because that's already a cemetery, that area, yeah, by the, oh, that's not?
Yeah, so it's a different, it's a different parcel, but.
But then again, Holomua looks nice and it's good view and it's adjacent to town and everybody else there. So what's going to happen to that? Like what, what are we going to do like say Kapakia fill up?
That's why we're, we're discussing a new cemetery.
Yeah.
He's asking when Kapakia is at capacity, if the new site's not ready or what happened?
It could happen, you know, like God forbid.
He said only get half of us in fifteen months.
The next year.
People would have to look for the private cemeteries, yeah. Yeah.
So let's say the RW Meyer spot, a buffer was created between the residential area and where a cemetery would go. Which there would be, I imagine that there's thought been given to how big that buffer should be. To the 100 yards, 200 yards?
I don't know that answer yet, yeah.
So the question is, is let's say it's 100 yards or whatever it never happens to be. There then remains a certain amount of acreage. How, if the RW Meyer site was selected, for how many years has it been projected that that could be adequate for our community?
I have that information, I don't have it with me, but I could follow up with Kiani and she can get that.
I think that's a key question for the community. Because if we choose a site and in 10 years it's full, we got to look for another site. We don't want to do this too many times.
Yeah, no.
The minimum size was two acres.
The minimum size was two acres, which I think got us.
Kapakia is a little over two acres.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's been there for decades.
But there, there's a density factor that's.
Sure.
I mean, if, you know, firm capacity ratio of square footage to.
Yeah.
Basically, part of your site selection has to do with the digging.
Yeah.
It's all going to be rock or.
Yep, so that was, that was part of the, kind of like the.
Is that why you mentioned the drainage?
Yeah, so the soils, right? So what are we digging through? Is it?
Avoiding blue rock.
Yeah, clay or is it sand or is it? So, yeah. And this exercise allows us to actually plan the cemetery, to say, okay, we're going to have X amount of burial plots. If I'm not mistaken, it was pretty considerable. I don't know the exact number of years it would, it would take, but I want to, I want to say it was in the 50 to 200, if I'm not mistaken.
That's the basic function of the cemetery.
Correct, yeah.
It has nothing to do with like, okay, this is for service people, this is for religion, A, religion, B.
Yeah, it's just, it's just, yeah, burial plots at this point, yeah.
Yeah, for today, we're just, we're primarily looking at sex.
Yeah.
Like where should the cemetery be?
But good things to think of, for sure.
And then in, in the next, you know, steps, we'll, we'll discuss cemetery design. What would be the budget for something?
So we, we haven't gotten there yet. As far as, yeah, we'd have to do a conception.
Like land acquisition, operating, like what specifically, what budget item? That's in purchase, land acquisition?
If I remember correctly, I think we budgeted $750,000.
But hopefully it'll be less than $750,000.
But typically the county makes a schedule very particular.
Yes, yeah.
So we don't typically make one off work, yeah?
Yeah.
And there's only.
But they could sell that. Yeah.
There are non-zoning complexes, yeah. But that'll be part of the EA as well to just identify the activities and make sure it doesn't conflict with the current land use.
Just wanted to share something, just kind of address that question you had about how long. I've been, I've been doing this for 44 years and my in-laws are doing it this for me. So Kapakia was, when I first started, when I got out of the army, was half, half filled. So just to give you an idea, and it's a little over two acres, yeah?
Yeah.
So it'll last a while. If you get the, you know, the acreage you're talking about, yeah?
Yeah.
So it should last us for a long time. I would say 100 years, you know, roughly unless Molokai blooms, which I really don't think that's going to happen, yeah?
Right. As an add-on to what Mark was saying about, we wanted, you know, when you started at Kapakia, it was already like that, yeah? Certain, wow, family was kind of real close, you know, and not just.
For the part here, same to a ball, burying on top, yeah? Because Kapakia, you cannot see plots next to each other. So what we have done, Roger and I, while the county over the years is the first, like the spouse buried nine feet and on, on top, six feet later, yeah? So for those that are there already, then we can still bury them with a loved one as long as, you know, the plot is available, yeah? Yeah, Roger? That's right, yeah, you know, just, just for the ones that are there, yeah?
Is that a possibility in an open county cemetery? Let's say the first person needs interment here, that they can kind of reserve the one next to it?
We don't discuss design and future.
That's a.
Oh, yeah, but that's a good thought, yeah.
That's a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a planning.
We'll discuss design and policy and how all of that will work after we acquire a property so that we can move on it. Yeah, yeah, I know, I know, it's very exciting. I have a question.
A comment. I would suggest that not only should we look at what is an appropriate place to do this, but if we choose a site, then that means nothing else can be done there. So on any of these properties, are we eliminating the possibility to do something particularly beneficial to the community by making it a cemetery? So for example, are.
Definitely not at Holomua. I don't think anything's going to be done there. And Uncle Moku can speak to the kind of like the scale house and the poisons that was mixed in that area. So apart, you know, like, or, you know, a school would never be there. As far as like RW Meyer, like.
Right, but Holomua could be, there could be something developed commercially there. It's at a major intersection and, you know, it may not be farming, may not be appropriate because of the contamination. The school may not be appropriate, but it could be appropriate to do something that was commercial there. It's, you know, the one intersection on the island that has the most traffic. So if we were to put a cemetery there, you know, let's say the contamination was not a concern to people, which I think it would be. That means that nothing commercial could happen there. But, you know, at the RW Meyer site, what else could possibly be done there apart from a cemetery? A tree farm, maybe a nursery? So I think that these are considerations that we should take in mind is that if we put a cemetery someplace, that means nothing else can be done with that property. And is the, does the property have potential to have other benefits for the community?
Motherland, we consider that. Yeah.
That's, it's an important point, I think, too, because with, with the expected rise in sea level, a lot of things we're looking at moving. So I'm just curious if that would be a consideration. If you guys decided to move forward with a purchase, like Roland's saying, Holomua Junction is a busy spot. Would that, there be a public announcement about that or something like that? Or would you guys just buy it and then?
No, I mean.
An announcement about what?
That you're going to purchase that property for use as a cemetery.
Well, that's why we're having this meeting first.
Yeah.
And then there would be more.
Yeah, yeah, if you're bringing it up here, that that's a considered place. But then the next step before you buy it, would that, would there be any thoughts? Because that, just curious about, I know there are a couple different entities on the island that are thinking about that property and what they want to do.
Across the street, there's a warehouse across the street.
The warehouse side, yeah.
That's not where we're.
You're talking about.
Across the street.
Yeah.
Where there's the parking lot, the CDL driver license.
Oh, so Makai side.
Yeah, Makai side, yeah.
Creeds.
Oh, okay.
You thought we were going to tear down the building? Is that the location we are thought, we're going to be building, the cemetery? Okay, I'm glad we got that cleared up. Okay, cool. Kiani?
Sure. So I just wanted to, community outreach specialist first, I just want to say that I want the community, I want the community to be super aware that when this council member makes a proposal, her plans include a full spectrum of ideas. And so we're not going to talk about design, but one of the things I wanted to address Roland is that property in Holomua is having difficulty for even the police to have been there. Because there's no infrastructure, there's no sewage line, and the water would be almost 300% more expensive than the county has. So in theory, there's not really any feasible construction that could be held at that place for the amount. So a cemetery is like almost the perfect thing. Also, when you say cemeteries, you can't do anything else. Actually, the plan that they had was to actually make it a park, a beautiful place where we could stage emergency disaster relief equipment and have a staging area for our community where they already drive up to be, but creating something new. And I guess the last comment I would like to make is as we go into the design phase, I think it's important for us to get out of the box of typical traditional cemeteries. And also to get out the box that what you want and what this island can provide for long term may not be the same thing. And so where people want to be buried whole, we have to think that we're an island. And at some point, that's not going to be possible unless we're going to turn everything into a burial place. So I decided to say that she's been, I've been on this particular thing, not as long as these guys, but we're thinking of those things. And I would ask the community to think broader and. and not be stuck in those things. So when we sit down to talk about, um, these kinds of stuff that we're not thinking in the box, and also to do your homework and research about the properties that we're looking at, so that you're not, um, thinking that things can be done there that actually cannot be.
Yeah, for the record, this is that research for me. So I appreciate you guys going into the detail. And I think if people didn't ask the questions that we didn't hear that, I, I know the county does a good job for us. I see it all the time. I also appreciate how she makes the meetings move along and end on time. But I think that us probing you guys and asking questions is how we learn this stuff and give.
Yep, absolutely.
Glad we got it cleared up, that is the property across the street and that warehouse.
Yeah. You have the pictures next time, yeah?
It's a little dark, I'm sorry.
Securing new location to continue with the old capacity of Kapakia primarily, right?
Yes.
But nothing to do with, uh, sea level rise, um, will be problematic for that Kapakia, in whatever they call it.
We, we have, we, we will look at that as an option, right?
Separate.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a part of it, but it's separate. So it's like, okay, if sea, sea level rises X amount of feet, you know, we're gonna be underwater in how many years? So do we block out a section for that reinternment, right? Which.
But we're not talking about that today.
Yeah, but, but, but we're thinking, we are thinking about it, so, yeah.
Uh, the, uh, climate change plan that Sosemo Molokai, uh, completed, um, also discusses.
That, that's addressed.
Yeah.
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 Good thoughts.
Yeah, 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 that's on the short line. Uh, any other questions for Paul or myself? Um, any other ideas that, um, I, I think Paul discussed all the different places that we've looked, but any other ideas on sites that you didn't see on the list that perhaps we can look at? Mark?
Is there a way, you know, like, um, you know, the, the Mowats, you know, like, can, you know, the land, you know, near the existing cemetery around?
So that's DHT Chalk.
Or DHT Chalk.
And somebody is leasing on it, yeah?
Yeah, and it's, um, we, you know, we just talked about sea level rise, so we don't really wanna continue burying there. We wanna go back up. Yeah.
And also I agree with what Uncle said, you know, like, whatever is egg, you know, like, keep it for egg, you know, to grow our food, that's, you know, like, we are alive and we eat every day.
For sure, that's why we avoided those areas that we can grow food.
Yeah.
Any other examples?
Auntie Laurie? I'm not being a hinty, but, um, I wanted to make a comment.
Yeah.
I wanted to make a comment. Um, it's really obvious that, um, RW Meyer is at a higher elevation. Probably gonna need to use less water, um, than the Holomua site. And, um, you know, it's beautiful there. Uh, we have a state park already at the end of the road up there. Um, I thought that having a cemetery would undoubtedly increase the usage of the Hala'au State Park. Um, right now, the, I've seen that increase, um, of usage at the park, part of it, actually. Um, because to me, it's like a Pu'u Honoa, some place where people run away to, like, the world to, to, um, check chill. And so I would think that there would be an increase in the park usage if people came up to be at the cemetery, which should also be beautiful and a nice place to visit, because it's much cooler elevation and. Um, it's funny, we said, um, I think, I don't know if Mark said this, but at Holomua, you do have a nice view. And, and whether our beloved is deceased or not, um, I go to Manalos Cemetery, and I just love the view at Manalos Cemetery. I think it's the most beautiful cemetery on Molokai, because you get to see the backside of Manai and the ocean. I think it's breathtaking. Yeah, absolutely beautiful. Um, we know that that's all privately owned too. Every cemetery has its own, um, like, the Catholics have the Catholic Cemetery, Hawaiian Homes and Dead Cemetery, and, and it's all to take care of. The county is the only, um, public works, um, that will take care of everybody. And so, and that's because, right now, I don't even know what the long plans, but we've, they've never charged for burials. Unlike Oahu, where you could pay twenty thousand dollars for a plot, it's like buying land. And so that's where we cannot reserve plots and stuff, um, but it's great. I think we're the only place left, I think, in Hawaii that is like that. So I wanted to thank the county, and I wanted to thank Keanu, because we've been kinda banging the alarm for a number of years, saying we have to initiate planning for another site. Um, you know, taking into climate change and stuff like that. So I really wanted to thank the county, I wanted to thank Keanu for actually finding, uh, people who could do the research and the funding in order to get the ball rolling, because all of the work that they've done is really intense, like, research. And so I just think that we hear it now, so I wanted to thank you guys and. Yeah, I completed a review. Cause I will be alive, that I will be there.
Thanks Auntie Laurie.
But it's kinda hot.
No, we've been talking about this a long time too, because Kapakia has been.
Slowly.
Running out of space here, and we've been, been talking about it, um, for a number of years now. So, um, me, I'm kinda, just to be honest, I like push them to move even faster. Tell me, oh, how soon do we need this? I said yesterday. Yeah, because we are really late already. We, like I said, we got two more plots. I mean, of course, Lucky Roger and, um, his gang, they're very good and creative and have been very helpful. You know, uh, the county has been very good, you know, in my forty-four years of doing this, they've been really good as far as, uh, accommodating our people here on Molokai, and we're very fortunate, uh, to have them and very fortunate to have had Kapakia. You know, Molokai, we're the only place that I know of that got free burial plots still. You know, and everybody, everybody else, you gotta, you gotta come up with some, you gotta come up with a lot of money, you know, for property to be buried nowadays. You know, I talked to people on Oahu, and a lot of guys are paying like twenty thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, this, you know. You get, you get local guys over here, and you gonna tell them five, ten thousand dollars, ain't gonna make it. They're gonna, they're gonna tell you, you know what, I just like bury them in the backyard, which a lot of families have, especially out at Manai. But you have to own the property, yeah? You have to own the property as well as, what is it? Yeah, have to be designated, yeah?
It's a process.
It's a process.
It's what, um, Roland said, it's in perpetuity. Yeah, then convenience for cemeteries have to be in perpetuity, so forever and ever. So, so a good point you brought up.
So it's, I'm happy we're at this point, but, yeah, I like push some more. You know, and I, I very appreciate it, Keanu. Thank you, I mean, you know, for, for hearing that and I mentioned that to her from when she first started, I said, hey, we really need this. So she, you know, she been, you know, moving, moving this along, so hopefully we have a place that we can call a cemetery soon, you know, have a plot that is big and, you know, I, I know Kalai is the best place. I mean, I live up there and we have, we always have rain, so at least it'll stay green, yeah, it's less water being used and maintenance-wise, so I think it's in my, you know, for, for me, because I'm close to Easy Two, yeah, when I probably bury somebody, I think we're right home. No, but, um, it's, it's just maintenance-wise. It's probably the best, the best place to go and, um, property around that, like what you were talking about, there's some deep gulches over there, so it's sectioned, it's kinda sectioned off naturally, yeah? So that section that we're looking at, there's nobody that can actually build adjacent to that. You know, um, on either, on either side, you have the highway, and you have the gouge in the back of that.
Yeah, in the back, all the way in the back, yeah.
That's.
That comes across.
That's the nice part about that, by any, thank you.
Hala'ankumoku. Uh, thank you for, uh, segueing into the next question for everyone, which is, um, is there a preference? Holomua or, um, Meyer property?
Just like a general answer.
Um, I, I, I could, or if anyone, like, if there is no preference, that's also okay. Um, but it's for the collection of information for, um, public works.
Yeah, everything I heard people say here about the, uh, the location of, of in Kalai of Myers, yeah? Um, the, uh, the continent there, the, um, you know, I, I know I don't stay in town anymore, but when I did, it's so freaking hot here. I had to go up there, and I used to picnic at Meyer Cemetery or up at Hala'au Park, and it's just, uh, it's beautiful spot, and it seems like a good place. Well, if I, if I just spend the rest of my life or death in Holomua Junction, I don't know if I'd be that happy about it.
Something else.
Uh, any other feedback?
Yes, on Holomua Junction, um, it's, let's say that there's enough water to irrigate and landscape it and so forth. It would be sort of artificial, having a green spot of a few acres in the middle of what is essentially a very arid environment. It would feel odd to me. I would think that the, the Meyer property, it's already green, everywhere you look, it's green. It, it would feel more like a park setting, I think, than Holomua.
Anyone else that may be buried at the cemetery that has a preference? Okay, do you have any other questions?
No.
Do you wanna get information on? Okay, well, uh, if there are no other questions or comments, then we'll, we'll thank Paul for his presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, and then we'll move on to the next phase of our town hall meeting, um, which is, uh, inviting, uh, folks that have, uh, updates. Uh, let me know that they're ready to be here. Uh, we have, uh, the college, so Kelly is here, if you're, if you're. And then we can hold her mic for you. And then, uh, I know we have Auntie Gaila from Costa Government Commission, yeah? No? We just hold it, yeah? Okay, okay. Hi, I just wanted to share, hi, I'm Kelly Duro, I'm the site coordinator at the Molokai Education Center. And I just wanted to share that our newsletter went out to all the PO boxes on Molokai. Um, it shares some news updates about things that are happening at the college, but inside, you'll find our scheduled classes for the fall semester. And I wanted to point out that we are, um, reviving things at the farm as far as our agriculture program, and so we're gonna kick off with a free Ag 101 Home Gardening Class, um, and so I encourage you to check that out. Um, we also have basic computer skills that we're offering for free, so for folks that you know that need to brush up on their computer literacy, please send them our way. Um, we also have grants to support construction, um, majors. So folks that are interested in earning certificates in construction technology, this includes plumbing, electrical, um, we have funding to support that. Um, and then we have first aid CPR, AED, that's being offered tuition-free. And, um, we have scholarships for students that are pursuing health pathways. And so there's lots of exciting stuff, lots of great opportunities for residents, and I just wanted to come out and make sure that, you know, we're, we're spreading the word. So if you're not interested yourself, if you could pass along the memo and just share within your families and your networks and let them know, um, we're open for registration now, and the deadline is August eighth for fall semester. Yeah. And how do they register? Um, you, you know, the best way is to come and stop by our, um, our campus if you're interested in any of our programs. Uh, we'll walk you through the registration, uh, and application process. There's many steps, but we'll make it fun and easy. Any questions? Okay, very good, good job. Okay, um, so any of our boards and commissions wanna give any updates to the community? Okay, oh, where's? Right there.
Oh, where, oh, where the commission is for now, okay.
Hi, I'm Jan. Um, I, I serve as the chair for two commissions, um, for the homeless commission first, um, the Commission on Healing Solutions for Homelessness. It's been a really difficult role for the last three months, um, because of all the legal battles with the council and the mayor on, um, nominations to the commission. We haven't been able to have quorum. And so I, I wanted to say that, to plug in, that we really need the community's support in legislation and policy changes that Keanu and others are pushing to allow for holdbacks for commissioners, um, when there's no seats. And also different kinds of changes they're trying to make to the structure of commissions, so that we don't run into this problem, um, anymore. And including mass nominations on one certain particular time of year. But for the most part, um, I encourage you to, to come and view it. It's always online, it's at one thirty every, uh, fourth Thursday of the month. And, uh, we are supposed to be advising the council and administration on anything that concerns poverty and homelessness in Maui County. Um, we do need the community's support in helping the commission to, uh, be better equipped and better, um, educated on what the community needs and what individual communities think would be a solution, uh, for your particular geographical area. Um, for the Molokai Planning Commission, we are every other, well, every sec, first and third Wednesdays of the month at eleven, um, AM, and you can view us online also. We haven't gone back to in-person, even though that's something that I really wanna do. Um, and for the most part, the most important thing coming up is July tenth, we, Molokai, will be reviewing, um, the, the resolution to end the Minatoia, um, list for, uh, non-conforming uses of things that were set back before when it comes to vacation rentals. So, um, there were over nine hundred people in attendance yesterday in the Maui Planning Commission. Um, um, people are invited to come view. I hope we know more than nine hundred people, um, uh, but on our, I know they ended at eight. Uh, but as the chair, I've made it clear that we intend to finish testimony in one meeting. So you may have the opportunity to stay longer, if that's the case, but July tenth at eleven AM.
All online.
All online.
No in-person.
No in-person.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
I have a question for.
Oh, any questions? Sorry, Jan.
You said you have questions.
Oh, okay.
Um, you can expand about the, this is the homeless, uh, you guys are providing advice to the council on homelessness?
Yep, so our office, um, created a resolution to form the first ever, um, commission on homelessness to specifically address and advise on, on the, I, the, the challenge of homelessness, unsheltered and poverty in Maui County. So we the first one in the entire state, and we're one of only three in the entire United States. Um, so what the commission is designed to do is, one, um, to advise the council and the administration on policy changes, funding, and also on collaboration, uh, for healing solutions to communities when it comes to implementing plans and in, um, and, and ideas for, um, addressing homelessness and, and houselessness in Maui County. Um, but it's also equally important that the foundation of the commission is about implementing OEV science and culturally appropriate, um, ideas and initiatives that are not foreign to this place. Um, it is estimated that, uh, about eighty or ninety percent of all the unsheltered in Hawaii is of native Hawaiian descent. And, um, personally, I feel it's because of a lack of identity and displacement is the biggest thing. But all of the solutions are to put them in homes and structures in order to cure the problem, but the problem is a systematic problem. So the commission was created in its best intent, um, to address changes in the system of dealing with homelessness, as opposed to individual kinds of projects and just putting people in houses, yeah?
And you guys haven't met yet?
We don't, no, we have, we've been in existence since twenty twenty-one, April of twenty twenty-one. Um, they've only made one. They've only made one recommendation so far, and that was for our medical outreach unit in Maui. Part of the challenge has been that because the commission is one of a kind, we don't have a template to follow. Secondly, everybody wants a solution, but nobody wants to do the hard work. So we've been having difficulty, not so much with the council, but with administration, agreeing to think outside of the box. And because funding for homelessness is almost always from HUD, there's so many restrictions in the way that we're doing that, so we're working with the council and other people to try figure out independent or other ways of being able to get funding and policy changes that can benefit it. But one of the biggest problems is that this is new, and getting off the ground has been difficult because there's desire to help, but just like how when we think of cemetery, we think of graveyard as opposed to park and like, I wanna be buried in a pot under a tree, like, as opposed to that being a normal way of thinking, homelessness is usually thought of as you get mental illness, you get drug problems, you need a house, you know, as opposed to this whole problem that the system in general has has created. So, yeah.
Whoa, my goodness. It's a big issue, that's why.
Yeah.
It's just, it's growing every day.
So so I will give you one highlight. One of the reasons we wanna meet is that one of the recommendations our commission would like to do, and this is unofficial right now, is sent, Shane Senancy, Councilmember Senancy, has invited our commission to talk story about how we can become more effective. And one of the ways that we feel we could be effective is the council has designed the commission to have nine representatives from each of the nine districts and two people that the mayor appoints. And the idea is to do district-specific information and data collection and then formulate nine independent plans that work holistically for that geographical area so that we don't take the cookie cutter approach. And we feel that when funding and all that is applied in that way and each community can determine, like, for instance, Molokai, I would never agree to unshelter on Molokai just because of the legal implications and not being able to stop people from coming. But there may be Pu'u Honoa type things, there may be Ohana housing type things, you know, different kinds of things that make more sense for Molokai, but wouldn't make sense for Kahului, right? So, yeah.
Thank you for your question. All right, any other boards and commissions? I don't think there are.
Yeah, I just got a quick pitch if you're interested in keeping people out of the cemeteries for longer. The Community Health Center could use some support for going through transition, and we could use some local people on the board. It'd be great. It's two to four hours a month, pretty easy, and you get to influence health of our communities.
How do you apply?
Tell your, tell your family members that anybody you think to be a good person, come out of Health Center. Egg can give you a form, we can fill it out.
What kind of qualifications are you thinking are appropriate?
I think the only restriction is if you have somebody who works there, a family member, then I don't think you'd be on the board. But if you're anybody else in the community, I don't know, you gotta be 18. Do you remember those rules, Greg? Just be involved. 18 years old, yeah, and don't work there, yeah. But we could use some help. It's a good time, it's transition. We're looking forward to a good future too. So it'd be great to help. You guys support anybody.
Thank you for that announcement. We also have Representative Poi Poi here with us. Do you have any announcements that you'd like to share?
Come up here.
You don't have to give us your legislative summary. I won't put you on the spot, cause we only have three more minutes.
I'm not trust for
She's not dressed.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mahino. Mahino's here.
Aloha. Okay, so one thing that I am excited to share, well, we did a lot of work this session. I sent out a mailer which tried to cover as much as possible on four pages. But one thing that I am excited to share about is that in the budget, which isn't official until July 1st, we did secure $2 million to do the air transportation non-emergency pilot program. Yeah, so, but I I already have been working with all the different stakeholders and I'm having meetings with Department of Health, different people in the airspace, just all the resources that I can find, and, you know, barking up every tree, meeting with everyone. I'm trying to map out the different resources, so once we're ready to build the program and we get the funding that we can get going on it faster. So hopefully by the end of the year, but it's gonna take time because of all the different regulatory barriers and the different levels with federal, mostly state and federal issues. But we've also made some connections on the federal level, so, yeah, so very hopeful.
Any other ways we can help you? With this?
Well, so far, the community has been really helpful with testimony, and that really helped to get the funding in the budget, even though the bill died. I think there was enough testimony that was compelling enough that enough legislators heard to also help me prioritize it. Going forward, I think we probably will schedule community meetings once we have more to present on and once the funding is actually official. Cause it's not official yet, but it will be, yeah.
Thank you so much for sharing.
Okay.
All right, any other announcements, upcoming meetings? Oh, here, Molokai Heritage Trust. Oh, which one? Bye? Heritage Trust update?
Oh, I'm sure.
30 seconds.
30 seconds.
Aloha, Inakako. So Molokai Heritage Trust, I'm one of the founding board members, and I can briefly give an update of where we're at. We just came back from California of doing a one-week trip. We went up with Lahaina Community Land Trust, and we met with three different tribes, Indian tribes up there to learn how they got their land backs, and it was really good. They came out totally prepared for us. We didn't even have to ask for anything. We sat at the table. They brought their attorneys who helped them from beginning to end. We sat down with like their main people who are in charge of all of their land acquisitions, what they went through. We did tours around their places. We also went to the Cultural Conservancy, which is in wine country in California. So we spent one whole week, and it was long days, 5 o'clock in the morning, and we wouldn't be done till like 9 o'clock at night. So we did a lot of outreach efforts. It's one of many that we're gonna start doing. And on Molokai, for the Heritage Trust, we're gonna continue to do community outreach. We just wrapped up with the kupunas. We're still finalizing the bylaws, cause that is what the community asks for, is to set up the trust, set up the bylaws and all the legal things that needs to be done. And then we're gonna start going into membership, and then hopefully we can do elected boards. And again, Molokai Heritage Trust is a community-led, community-driven trust that is being set up, so, yeah.
And specifically for acquiring Molokai Ranch?
Yeah, so the first thing on the table is to acquire the Molokai Ranch lands, or 56? Yeah, 56,000 acres, something like that. So that's the first thing on top of our list, and then we will branch out further. But mahalo.
Mahalo. Any other updates, announcements? Oh, shucks, my mom left. The the first regatta was this past Saturday. It went really well, and then I think the next regatta is next Saturday. And I don't have the date. Any other updates? What's that? July 6th, I think. Hopefully that's correct. At the Wharf, at 9 o'clock. Okay. Okay. Molokai Holokai?
Yeah, that's cool.
Oh, shoot. Yeah, I don't, I don't know the date for that one. Clara was here earlier at the last one. But yeah, keep an eye out for Molokai Holokai. I know that's coming up soon. Okay, so, well, if there are no other updates or announcements before folks get sunburned, we can, we can close in. Jan, you want a pulle for us?
Mahalo, can't call for this time. Mahalo for bringing us together. Thank you just for the aloha, the abound. We, mahalo that we get to sit together. We always agree on the method or the theory on how to get to our regating, but we always agree that our Aina is important, our people are important, and you are important. And we just thank you and Jesus me. Amen.
Beautiful. Mahalo, everyone, for coming. Drive safely home.